Mr. Secretary.
Okay, I guess it's showtime.
Yeah.
All right, Congresswoman, we have enough people on the line, and so you can begin whenever you're ready.
Okay, thank you, Katie. Well, good afternoon to my wonderful constituents. Thank you for joining me today for our town hall meeting on climate change. We all know that climate change, and it's been said over and over again, is an existential threat to our nation and to our planet. And the science is very, very clear that we have to take immediate action to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions to ensure that temperatures do not rise by more than 1.5 Celsius, which would cause irreversible damage to our planet. Here at home, every community in our congressional district and beyond is already experiencing the impacts of a warming climate. We have had fierce wildfires, we're living through a severe drought, and we have rising sea levels. Earlier this year, Congress passed the Inflation Reduction Act, the largest, the single largest effort to address the climate crisis in our nation's history. This legislation honors our commitment to the Paris Agreement by investing 369 billion, that's with a B, in clean energy, electric vehicles, and other efforts that are, will reduce greenhouse gas emissions by 40% by 2030, which is really just around the corner. These investments in clean energy will decrease energy bills for households nationwide. Consumers will also benefit from tax incentives to purchase American-made vehicles, electric vehicles, energy-efficient home improvements like heat pumps and installing solar panels. I'll have more to say about the specifics of these programs and how you can access them during the Q and A. But it's now my, really my high honor to welcome and introduce the former Secretary of Energy Ernest Moniz. During the Obama administration, he promoted historic American leadership in science and clean energy technology innovations. He implemented policies that supported the environment, national security, and cutting-edge American research, including acting as a key architect of the Paris Agreement. He previously served as Under-Secretary of Energy with responsibilities in science, energy, and nuclear security. Secretary Moniz also served as Associate Director for Science in the Office of Science and Technology Policy from 1995 to 1997, with responsible for the physical, life, and social sciences. He joins us today from MIT, where he continues his extraordinary work. And Secretary Moniz, we are on behalf of all of my constituents, thank you. Thank you for joining us. Thank you for your superb leadership in our country. And what we accomplish here, of course, matters around the world. So, thank you, thank you, thank you. All right, so let's get to the questions. We asked the questions.
Let me say thank you, Madam Chairman, for this invitation to join you and your constituents.
Well, it's a joy. And I noted earlier before the program began that I liked the bust that is behind you to the right on our screens of FDR, who continues to certainly inspire me and I think so many others. Now, the questions that have been asked really represent almost all of the questions that were submitted. So, let's start. The first one is from Frank in San Jose. How long do you think it will take before we can realistically be free of using fossil fuels? Secretary Moniz, let's go to you for that one.
Okay, be happy to. Well, first of all, I think it's very important that we double down on something that frankly, we haven't done enough of. And that is not simply envisioning where we want to be in 25 or 30 years, but actually working on the roadmap to get from here to there. Certainly, the situation in Europe with the Ukraine crisis, the natural gas situation, has pointed out that, you know, the reality is we still have a significant dependence on fossil fuels. The Germans are certainly looking for more gas at the moment. What we really need to do is to manage that transition to a net zero future in 2050. That net zero future, in my view, and frankly, in the view of the International Energy Agency, if you look at their so-called Sustainable Development Portfolio, they still retain a significant usage, greatly reduced, but a significant usage of gas and oil, but offset by what's called carbon dioxide removal. That is, we'll be able, I think we have to be able, to greatly reduce the usage of those fossil fuels, but recognize that they have some qualities like energy storage that we're going to need to retain at some level. But then we need to complement it by literally getting carbon dioxide out of the atmosphere, out of the oceans, reduce that legacy greenhouse gas that was put into the atmosphere so that we can be net zero and beyond that, net negative, in terms of greenhouse gas emissions in the atmosphere.
So important. Well, we know that President Biden has committed to achieving a net zero economy by 2050 and a zero-carbon power sector by 2035. And last year, he announced that as part of our obligations under the Paris Agreement, that the United States will reduce emissions 50% by 2030. So, these are really ambitious goals, and then, of course, the steps to get there. A good deal of it is embedded in the legislation that Congress passed, and he signed into law in, I believe it was late August. So, I'm deeply grateful for his leadership because this has a great deal of specificity and then the steps in order to achieve to achieve these goals. The next question is from Sybil in Los Altos. What financial incentives is the federal government offering to residents who wish to purchase a new or used electric vehicle? This is a great question. I've got a direct answer for you, Sybil. The legislation that I keep referencing, the Inflation Reduction Act, provides, it's a whopping tax credit, $7,500 tax credit to purchase a new electric vehicle, or $4,000 credit to purchase a used EV. And these credits can be claimed for any eligible vehicle purchased after August 16th of this year. So, that tax credit is alive and well. It's right there on the table, ready to be claimed by my constituents and people across the country. Now, to claim the credit, the vehicle has to cost no more than $80,000 for an SUV, a van, or a pickup truck, or $55,000 for any other vehicle. And the income limits to claim the credit are $150,000 for singles, $300,000 for married couples for the new EV credit, and half those amounts to claim the used EV credit. Now, you may not be able to remember all of this, but the information is on my website. Beginning in 2024, buyers can claim the tax credit as a rebate at the point of sale. And these credits only apply to electric vehicles built in North America. So, we want to reward what is built in America. And the Department of Energy's Alternative Fuels Data Center maintains a list of eligible vehicles on its website. So, maybe I gave you almost too much information, but it sure is very, very good news. And if anyone ever wonders why we do things through the tax code, it's highly motivating. Anyone that owns a home and is able to take the mortgage interest deduction, we know what that has done for homeownership in our country for decades and decades. So, thank you, Sybil, for that question. Next question is from Edith.
May I just add? Let me just add a little bit to that.
Sure.
You obviously gave a lot of information. There was one other area, and that is the charging infrastructure. That also, there was a $1,000 credit in there for the charging infrastructure, which is extremely important. And also, on the issue of Made in America, there will also be an increasing scale going to 2030 for content of the critical minerals, metals, for example, in the batteries themselves. So, again, a very strong jobs and Made in America content. I would also add, if I may, that I completely agree, of course, that the IRA is the single largest step we have had to address climate. But I want to say that Congress and administration have been busy in the last year at more than that. A year ago, roughly, the Infrastructure Act was absolutely very, very important, including for the grid and the charging infrastructure, for example, and other elements of infrastructure, of course, the so-called bipartisan infrastructure law. I also don't want to forget about the Congress's action and the administration's agreement with the CHIPS and Science Act. In particular, the science part of that bill, assuming appropriations follow, will do a large amount to assist the DOE's innovation program through the Basic Energy Sciences Program, the Fusion Program, and I know you've been a fan of Fusion, the Biological and Environmental Research Program. So, it's been quite a year with a trifecta of major bills, all of which, in different ways, crowned by the IRA, will advance our climate agenda.
Well, thank you for adding all of that, Mr. Secretary. And to constituents, the infrastructure, the new law on infrastructure, it's the single largest investment in infrastructure, our nation's infrastructure, in the history of our country. Some may remember that there was a major effort in the Eisenhower administration, but this stands as the single largest investment. And right here at home in the Bay Area, we are really looking forward to funds coming into our region. There's a guarantee of some $4.6 billion. That's with a B. That's a guarantee. That doesn't even speak to all of the grants that the cities and towns can apply for to get their infrastructure projects really over the line. So many cities and towns don't have the full funding. They get some from the state, but boy, when the federal government comes in together with their general funds, we can get these projects over the top. So, the next question is from Edith, and she is asking, how do we apply for the heat pump rebate? What evidence will be required to prove the replacement? Well, you can, Edith, you can claim a tax credit of 30% of the total cost of installing a heat pump, up to $2,000 starting next year. And next year is just really minutes away. Heat pumps installed in 2022, which is now, are eligible for a flat $300 credit. So, you're much better off waiting, you know, what, two months? You can claim the credit when you file your taxes. The IRS has not yet released the form to claim this credit for tax year 2023, which will, it's going, they'll include instructions about how to claim that credit. Now, beginning next year, each state will establish programs to provide point-of-sale rebates of up to $8,000 to purchase a heat pump for low- and middle-income residents. And the income limits are based on the local median income. So, they're going to vary among communities. So, interested constituents should check their eligibility with the state when the program is stood up next year. And if you need any further, you know, information, directions, you can always call my office, and we can assist you with it. But I think that this is exciting, because, as I said, the heat pumps installed in the upcoming new year, that has a real bump to it. And it's really going to accrue to the benefit of not only advancing this policy, but money back in your pocket as a result of doing something that is more than forward-leaning. Do you want to add anything, Mr. Secretary?
Yeah, actually, I would add something as a voice of experience here, since a few years ago, I had a heat pump put in at my house, which is about two and a half miles from MIT. And from that, what I would say also to your constituents is that what I found is calling contractors who could actually do the work, maybe call more than one, but they're really on top, obviously, of all the rebate, not only the federal, but the state, possibly even local rebates. They're looking for business, so they're ready to give you all the, to dot the i's and cross the t's on the rebate opportunities as well.
Yeah, that's exciting because it speaks to American jobs, too, that they, these are all Americans that will be doing the installation, so bravo to you for doing it. I'm not surprised, but bravo. This question is from Linda in San Jose, and she asks, what are US plans for building and expanding electric car charging infrastructure? Which you, Mr. Secretary, spoke of earlier, and what's the timeline? Well, the bipartisan infrastructure law, which we just chatted about, provided $5 billion with a B, over five years, to install EV charging infrastructure along highways. California is going to receive $383 million in this area alone. I offered an amendment to the legislation requiring that these funds prioritize faster charging equipment to ensure that the government invests in technology that won't become obsolete in a few years. And the IRA, the Inflation Reduction Act, also provides $3 billion to build charging infrastructure, and very importantly, in underserved communities. And that law now extended the existing tax credits for individuals and businesses to install EV chargers at home. So, I think between the infrastructure law and the IRA Act, that we've really spoken to, actually, answering your question. Do you want to add anything, Mr. Secretary?
You already mentioned the tax incentives as well, but one other thing I just mentioned is that the, as I'm sure many of you know, there's been a real improvement, shall we say, in the post office's offer to go electric. And very importantly, Congress, in looking at that, also included the infrastructure charging as part of what the post office could install. So, I think everybody working together to facilitate this transition is really critical. And I think by 2030, we should be able to get to at least a third of the new light-duty vehicle sales as EVs. That'll be critical for meeting the administration targets. In fact, if I may add one other thing, which is not on the question exactly, but I think.
We're hanging on every word you utter.
I think you mentioned earlier that the IRA, and by the way, my group and I, we've done our own modeling to confirm that, in fact, we confirmed that the IRA would lead to a 37% to 40% reduction in greenhouse gas emissions by 2030. But that's not including additional state programs. So, with additional state programs, I think we've got a shot, at least, at making that 50%. It's not going to be easy, but it's a credible stretch goal, I think, for us to look at.
Well, it's an incredible reduction in just a handful of years. It's very exciting. And speaking of the post office, my constituents are always ahead of us, Mr. Secretary. They said, this is from Larry in Los Altos, and he asks, how are we doing in getting the post office to purchase electric delivery trucks? Well, I'll go first on this, Larry. We have had a hell of a time with the US Postal Service because of the man that's at the top. And Congress really pushed back because he was on the verge of of purchasing a whole new fleet that would repeat all the, let's put it this way, the knowable sins of the past. So, we pushed very, very hard, and we put in the Inflation Reduction Act $3 billion with a B for the US Postal Service to purchase electric trucks. I think much to the chagrin of the top guy. But, you know, there are so many constituents that have weighed in on this, which makes me very proud of all of them, because this is really an enduring value of the people in our congressional district. And according to the post office's estimates, this should be enough to electrify the entire fleet. And if it's not enough to electrify the entire fleet, Congress will put up the dollars to complete it. But working with the postal service, this is what they informed us, and that's what we have, that's what we've done. Now, prior to the bill's passage, the postal service had planned for only 40% of their new fleet to be electric. And that increased from their original 10% after the pressure came down from Congress. They claimed that EVs were too expensive. But the agency's inspector general found that EVs would, not surprisingly, save money in the long run because of the lower energy and maintenance costs. So, I'm really, I'm proud that Congress exerted the pressure, was well worth it, because we're looking at an outcome that is, really fits with our time. It really would have been, well, I don't want to describe what it would have been, because we know, but we prevailed. Anything else, Mr. Secretary?
I would add also that the, in their original idea with the 10%, et cetera, going back to the beginning of the year, they were also talking about getting nine-mile-per-gallon delivery vehicles, not exactly the best-in-class. So, I think this change is quite remarkable, quite important. And also, because it's clear that the nature of the postal service with all the trucks going home at night, the delivery trucks, I mean, it's a natural. It is. Structure is not a big problem. And as I said, the Congress also included the infrastructure as part of the expense. So, having these fleets of vehicles be able to run on alternative quotes, fuels, is just a natural and very important. And it's an investment for, after all, for the next 10, 15 years, and it'd be crazy to lock in yesterday's technology.
Absolutely. This next question is from Steve in Los Altos, and he asks, following the passage of the IRA, what do you see as the next most important climate legislation for Congress to prioritize, going directly to the secretary on that one?
Well, I hope it's the next, but whatever the case, the most important, I think, legislation would be one that puts a national price on CO2 emissions. Ultimately, that's where we have to go. The Congress, I think, with the IRA and the infrastructure bill, has a very, very good and important set of incentives, which we need to get things kicked off. But eventually, we'll have to go to a price, because with success will come a bigger and bigger need for these low-carbon technologies. So, a carbon emissions price, I think, is very important. But I would elaborate a bit further. Actually, in your neck of the woods, the now-deceased George Shultz put forward, with Jim Baker and other moderate Republicans, mainly moderate Republicans, put forward a very interesting construct, which had a carbon emissions price. Then, that was combined with the idea that with a price, one could dial back on certain incentives. One would couple that with job protections, like having a carbon border adjustment for carbon content, you know, for imports. So, if we had a carbon price, it would require the countries sending us manufactured products to have either had a similar price or to pay a tariff to level the playing field. And so, I thought that that was an example of trying to build a coalition, reach across the aisle in Congress. And I believe, you're the one who should comment on this, but I believe that the public pressure to do something like this will just keep increasing. We see it in the polls developing. Once we get past this very, very divisive politics, basically, the extreme weather that we are seeing all across the country, obviously, in California. One season, we have drought, we have floods, we have forest fires, we have intense storms. We have just plain crazy weather, frankly. And, you know, if we don't do more building on the IRA, et cetera, well, we're just going to have more and more extreme weather. And it would be great to get ahead of that, but at some point, I believe, the pressure from the public will make this a bipartisan issue. And to me, a significant and escalating carbon emissions price is what we have to do. I would add one other feature, and I know you're certainly committed to this. And that is that, as was done with IRA, as was done with a lot of the recent activity of the Biden administration, social equity issues have to be front and center. So, we need to put a carbon emissions price, but we also need to remember we can't leave workers and communities stranded in this transition. So, we have to open the aperture and be able to deal with all of these issues at the same time.
Well, thank you, Mr. Secretary. I'm a strong advocate of including a carbon price in the Inflation Reduction Act and an original co-sponsor of the Energy Innovation and Carbon Divided Act. That establishes a steadily increasing price, increasing price on carbon emissions. The revenue would be returned as a rebate to all Americans. The revenue would be turned returned as a rebate to all Americans. And it was the estimate on that was a family of four would receive approximately two thousand nine hundred and seventy four dollars, that's just shy of three thousand dollars annually. And the 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 estimated reduced emissions would be ninety percent by twenty fifty. So, you know, it's
Right.
These these policies, I I think, are demonstrate, you know, that there's there are huge wins in this.
Right.
And not wins with a D, but win, W I N S.
Well, but but also tailwinds.
Yes, yes.
But but also, but also, you you reminded me, of course, when I mentioned that Schultz Baker approach, I forgot, of course, the very important fact that they also supported that uniform dividend to the entire population. They said, no, no, no means test, just divide the money up and send it back to the people. And they modeled, and we modeled separately, confirmed that with a uniform dividend, the the approach would be progressive for the seventy percent of the lowest part of the income distribution. So in other words, it would be it would be progressive as well. So that was all part of that of that plan, balanced with the carbon border adjustments and 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 the like. So I I think in the end, as you described with your own ideas, I think that that's that's where we're going to go eventually. The question is, can we get there soon rather than rather than later?
So much depends on the political will.
Absolutely.
Political will, yes.
And to be honest, I mean, obviously, there are elections coming up next week, and and I just hope the result of that is not, you know, the usual, we've taken two steps forward and then take one step back. We just got to keep, got to keep moving ahead.
Well, I think America, the word America is synonymous with progress, so.
In fact, if if I could add there as well, the one, the one, another in my view, very positive thing is I I would argue that in the last years, even though some had a hard time producing, I mean, uttering the words climate change, the reality is that the clean energy technology innovation agenda was pretty bipartisan. You know, and when I when I was secretary, Republicans controlled the Congress, we had pretty good bills there. And when Mr. Trump became the president, the administration proposals were not very good on technology innovation, but the Congress didn't pay attention and 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 strengthen that agenda anyway. So I think on the innovation side, we've had, you know, maybe without saying it, in big neon lights, some pretty good bipartisan approach, now we need that on the policy side as well. And if we have
Thank you for adding all of that.
And if we have policy certainty, I have complete confidence that our businesses will innovate as well with novel business models to promote the clean energy agenda.
Yeah, well, businesses depend on certainty. It's very difficult for them in a landscape where there's uncertainty where to make their investments. And here at home in Silicon Valley, once again, we're we're leading in these innovative technologies, no question about it. It's a source of pride to all of us here. Next question is from Michael in Scotts Valley. What are your plans to ensure that California has enough water and climate neutral energy in the future? Well, Michael, first of all, California has committed to achieving net zero carbon emissions by twenty forty five and has budgeted fifty four billion with a B over five years on climate initiatives. We know that we're a nation state. Fifty four billion dollars is a is a whopping commitment. Now, the bipartisan infrastructure law includes the following to address water shortages in Western states. One point one five billion for water storage projects, one billion for water recycling plants, two hundred and fifty million for desalination. I I pushed for more, but we were able to achieve that that figure. Three point two billion with a B for water infrastructure repairs. Now, the I would note that the city of Palo Alto has already received a a twelve point eight million dollar grant due to this law from the law for its very own rewater cycling recycling plant. So we're we're on our way, we really are on our way. The investments are there to be made with specificity to address the very question that that you just posed, so thank you. The next question is from William in Los Altos. Why doesn't the federal government lead the way in putting solar panels on every federal building in America? How about that one, Mr. Secretary?
Oh, okay, all right, well, first
I can just picture you on top of a building.
With with a hammer and a hard hat?
Yeah, exactly.
The I did that quite a few times as secretary, actually. But, look, first of all, I mean, I think it's very reasonable, the federal government, obviously, I, well, I believe is the biggest single electricity user in the United States.
Yes.
Somewhere north of three hundred thousand buildings, et cetera. The the only thing I would, however, say say to that is I think that we get a bigger bang for the buck by at least initially talking about really building solar farms, which are much less expensive per watt or or kilowatt installed for all of the big federal facilities. We should start with DoD and DOE, big facilities, and and building, building solar farms to to serve them, including including, of course, some storage, would be probably a way, I think, to get a faster, you know, start out of the box. While the 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 building by building approaches, you know, they they take a lot of study, a lot of a lot of engineering for for each building. They are more expensive, as I said, per per kilowatt. So so I think it's, I think it's a very good idea. There has been a commitment by the administration, the so-called twenty four seven clean energy, which actually, I think, started with Google in your neck of the woods about not simply getting to to state that we are a hundred percent renewables by buying offsets, you know, maybe half a continent away, but rather to have literally in each region, the actual renewable or low carbon resources that that are needed. So the government is committed to that, but I would be I I would not venture a guess as to when that might be accomplished. As I say, I I would, if I was still at DOE, I would be pushing to get these solar farms installations installed to get big chunks out of the system quickly.
Does that have to be done by statute, or can that be done administratively, Mr. Secretary? In other words, does for constituents, do we have to pass a law, or can the administration take that on?
I I think a lot of it could be done right now administratively. Like, if you're DOE, I think we could, we could really start start doing that. DoD, I think, could start doing that. I think for a broad program, it would almost certainly require, if nothing else, appropriations.
Yes, yeah, well, that's where the Congress comes in on it.
And so it it could be substantial, but once again, just like with the post office, eventually, it would be, you know, it would be viewed as as a good investment in terms of lifetime costs.
Well, it sets a terrific example for the country.
And it's an example, absolutely. And it's and frankly, it's also jobs and it's it's building, building the domestic industry, which will pay off in 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 multiple ways. So so I I think pushing in that direction is is a good idea. But again, I would, I would take the big wins immediately and
Yes.
And and
Well, it it, you know, there's a term, low hanging fruit. That seems to me to be one of them with a big, big, you know, net win.
In fact, I I would just add to that, that we also should remember that that should be coupled on the the other side of the coin as well, namely, energy efficiency. And the federal energy efficiency program really needs to be ramped up. That would, again, would require some legislation and 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 appropriation. But the Department of Energy did issue new higher standards for efficiency of 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 federal buildings, but now it's got to get implemented. That was really, really part of the Infrastructure Act.
Right, well, I did pass legislation that was signed into law in twenty twenty that required the federal government to reduce its energy use by improving energy efficiency of its data centers because there is, there's so much energy sucked up by those data centers and the agencies. You know, I mean, the agencies obviously can do it by adopting, you know, the latest technologies and 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 really replicating the best practices that the industry has out there. But I'm I'm so glad that this question was asked because I I I see some opportunities for myself working with DoD, the DOE, for what you described, Mr. Secretary. I'm also kind of painfully aware that it's five o'clock for you and that you have a hard stop. So, Mr. Secretary, I I really can't thank you enough. You've been with us for, what, forty five minutes? And we have all learned, this is a, just a an enormously beneficial opportunity for my constituents about an issue that they care very, very deeply about, as is manifested by their presence. So thank you to you for your leadership, for our beautiful country, for your ongoing work, and for making time to be with us today.
That was a pleasure, and and I think this is a wonderful way of exercising democracy.
It is, it is.
Constituents and frankly, we need more of that today.
We do, we do, we do. Well, as we prepare for a set, it's more than century, that centuries old you know, manifestation of our democracy and people going out to vote, that we you know, that we just practice this right on the ground here at home. And thank you, thank you for strengthening our country, thank you for enlightening us today. I'm going to come right back to you so that we can, you can join us again, if you will choose to do so. So stay safe, stay stay healthy, and you have our lasting gratitude, Mr. Secretary. I couldn't mean that more.
Thank you, and best wishes for the upcoming holidays to all of your constituents.
Yes, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so now we have a a question from Brian.
Okay, I will sign off.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Secretary, bye bye, bye. Isn't he so wonderful, what a, what an honor to have him join us. So now you're just with me. Now, this question, as I said, is from Brian in Menlo Park, and he asks, what are our biggest initiatives to address distribution and storage of renewable energy? Well, Brian, energy storage, as you know, asking the question, is it's key to the clean energy transition because wind and solar power are intermittent. And it's important to know that. Now, in the IRA, the Inflation Reduction Act, we provided a ten year investment tax credit of thirty percent for energy storage projects. And it allows cities and electric co-ops to claim the credit as a rebate. And that's because they don't pay taxes and otherwise can't claim the credit. So I I think that this is a very important step. The credit will help build twenty three hundred, two thousand three hundred grid scale battery plants. And and the law provided sixty five billion with a B to build more transmission lines to connect clean energy to the power grid. So when you ask what are the biggest initiatives to address distribution and storage of renewable energy, the good news is that I think that we've addressed that upfront in a, really in a very powerful way. This question is from Karen from Redwood City, beautiful name, it's my daughter's name, Karen. What are you doing to ensure that the United States actually meets the commitments required as outlined by the Paris Agreement? Well, I think I spoke to this a little earlier, but happy to speak to it again, Karen. President Biden has committed the United States to reducing emissions by fifty percent by twenty thirty. Now, the IRA, the Inflation Reduction Act, will reduce emissions by forty percent, which gets us eighty percent of the way to meeting that goal. The president has also committed executive actions to achieve additional emissions, emission reductions, such as strengthening vehicle emission standards and restoring, very importantly, California's ability to set its own standards. We have the the highest standards in the country. And so that's a very important policy. And I have, it's it's worth repeating, sometimes people don't know that I've consistently, consistently supported legislation to address climate change, including, as we discussed earlier with the secretary, including a price on carbon to provide additional incentives to reduce emissions and and back to your question, to meet our obligations under the Paris Agreement. I would also add that I believe it was the first day President Biden was in office, he restored America's commitment to the Paris Agreement because the previous president had walked away from it. So now, let's see, we have a question from from Nancy in Menlo Park and and several others as well. And as I said from the top, all the questions that that we're taking today during this meeting really capture the questions that constituents ask. So Nancy and many others asked, what can we continue to do as individuals to fight climate change? This is asked of me on a consistent basis, as is the question, what can I do to to help our our democracy? And I always say the first three words of our constitution are we, the people, so everyone has to vote. So on this one, I think that Nancy, that constituents can and should take advantage of the many benefits under the Inflation Reduction Act. And that includes, as I said before, the purchase of electric vehicles and improving the energy efficiency of our homes. So on the EVs, on the electric vehicles, there are substantial tax credits, up to eight thousand dollars in rebates for heat pumps, thirty percent credit for home solar panels. So, you know, while some of us, or many of us, are not anticipating doing, taking these steps in the moment, I think as we plan Uh, in the moment, um, I think as we plan uh, the improvements to our home or. Uh, to our homes or changing our vehicles that um, uh, that we be. Laser beam focused on the best way uh, to advance not only our national goals. But know that right here at home, um, that we're doing our, our best uh, as well. Uh, now there's a, the next question, uh, and thank you, Karen. Um, the next question is from Kendall uh, in Redwood City. Uh, is there a website that provides more information about the contents of the Inflation Reduction Act? Excellent question. Uh, you can go to, constituents can go to. Uh, and if you have a pen or pencil, piece of paper handy. White House, all one word, whitehouse.gov, G O V. Slash clean energy. Let me say that again, White House, all lowercase. And one word, dot gov. Slash clean energy, one word. I hope you got that. And if you didn't get it, call my office and uh, we'd be happy to repeat that. For you. So we're just about to um, to the magic hour. Uh, of um, of meeting. I, number one, thank you for participating. Thank you for the excellent questions. Uh, that you all submitted and um. I think, uh, well, let me say it this way. I learned a great deal from Secretary Moniz. This may be the first time that you've heard him. Uh, and it's a nice setting because it's just you, myself and the secretary. And um, I'm happy to um. Uh, you know, put this forum together and I will continue doing. Uh, issue specific forums as well. Many constituents like them and some don't. But uh, I like to cover all of the bases uh, to, to best serve you. So thank you for. Uh, participating. Thank you for your excellent questions. Uh, if you have more questions, let us know. Let me know. Uh, and um, if there's anything that we shared with you during uh, the meeting. And uh, you didn't get to uh, take a note on it or have, uh, as I said, further questions, please don't hesitate. Uh, to get ahold of us. Uh, we all work for you and what a privilege it is to do so. Uh, so we have um, the holiday of Thanksgiving coming up. I'm very thankful to each one of you for the trust that you've placed in me. And uh, want you to know that I work daily to live up to that trust. So if you haven't voted. Uh, get that ballot in. Uh, California uh, makes it so easy. We don't even have to go to the polls. Which I kind of miss myself because it was a wonderful ritual. Uh, taking my little children with me at one time and uh, remembering when my parents did that with me. So. So you can sit down at your kitchen table and do that. Uh, but uh, uh, God bless. Uh, the United States of America. May God protect our troops. Uh, and thank you to each and every one of you. Stay healthy and safe, everyone, and thank you. Bye bye.